All set, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for March 26, 2019. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the website. We're going to start off our agenda. We're going to take Lori Benari first. She's come in with some things she'd like to discuss with the board quickly.
Not on the agenda.
It's not. We signed this at a previous meeting, however, this is the covenant. You might recall last time we talked about this. This was literally hot off the presses. What they want to do is release those two building lots. We signed it last meeting, pending town council review and approval.
Yep.
They wanted to finesse some language because, as you know, she's in the process of selling the project to another party, but he wants to get going on building some of the houses first. So, the issue becomes posting surety. So, in theory, they're proposing that two building permits get released, but no occupancies get released pending their sale and posting of the surety that's been agreed upon. Okay? Now, this document was just submitted late this afternoon. Jay emailed me and said, he spoke with Lori, there is some risk for their side, but we can move forward with a conditional release of the law. I may not get a chance to review a draft release today, which he didn't, but the planning board can approve it, subject to my review.
You said lot or lots?
Lots, two, one and two.
Yeah.
Because it was two. You have any questions about that?
Well, not just put the signatures on the second page.
You'll sign it pending town council review and approval.
We won't be signing it tonight then.
Or revise it.
They're looking for it signed.
We'll sign it tonight, but it will be released.
But will not be released until.
So, town council reviews and approves.
Okay. You okay with that, Boyd?
Yeah.
We need a formal vote on that bill, or is that just?
No, I'd prefer a vote rescinding the last one and approving pending town council authorization.
I'll second that.
We need a motion to rescind for us.
Yeah, motion to rescind.
Seconded by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. All right, take the new motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse the new covenant pending town council approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Who signed it red?
Because I have a red pen, I didn't know what he's seeing red. All these red pens here, what's happening?
I don't think this will be acceptable.
Okay, well, then I'll re-sign it initially.
Can we get a new copy?
I'll have to print, yeah, I'll print a new copy before you.
Oh, boy.
I'm assuming you didn't change anything from what I got.
He can cross out.
Can we just throw these away?
I love the red pens.
He can cross out initially.
That's what I was gonna do, cross out initially.
I'll just get a clean copy.
We'll do a new copy at the end of the night. All right. Okay, all set, Lori?
Yep.
You good with that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, possible vote ASD Walam Mass Solar LLC, Walam Lake Road.
Before we get into that, Mr. Chairman, if it's acceptable, I would suggest that we talk quickly about the West Street, item two on the agenda, only because I might get yanked out to go to a different meeting.
Okay, all right. We'll take the second item on the agenda. Signed Douglas Renewables LLC, application of site plan review, 170 West Street.
Okay, so as you know, you had a few edits to the form from the last meeting. One was regarding the decommissioning and the only thing that's not in there that I just learned late this afternoon, that I'd be open to the board adding a condition, is basically there is one of the parcels that's part of the project that is in Chapter 61A, so we add a condition that's consistent with the statute, which may require town's right of first refusal and/or payment of rollback taxes.
It will require, yeah.
And so, we'll add that as condition, again, consistent with the statute, and I'll have town council draft the language.
All right, we good on that, Boyd?
Yep.
Yeah, so we're not signing it, we're just reviewing it?
No, you can sign it, and I'll add the condition and insert it in the document.
Okay.
All right. Everybody's good with signing it at the end of the night?
Yes.
Yes.
We need a vote on this, Bill?
Yeah, no, you voted.
This is just signing, okay. All right, everybody's good with that?
Yep.
All right. Sign that at the end of the night.
And then, it might be quicker if we deal with Bald Hill Road before we get through Walam Lake. Sorry, Evan.
I want you to leave Walam Lake.
Yeah.
You're not leaving until after that.
This guy's coming from Oxbridge, rookie. This is local for me, I haven't been here in a while.
That's right.
Probably want to go by the toll home.
That says lot. All right, well, thank you. Steve O'Connell from Andrew Survey and Engineering. With me here this evening is hopefully a future applicant, Steve Bangman. This may look familiar to you, or maybe this looks familiar to you. This is land at the end of Bald Hill Road. This is your assessor's map. I thought it was good locus purposes. This was, you probably put a lot of effort into leading up to the endorsement of a plan for the creation of the viability of this lot at the end. And what Mr. Bangman would like to do is, before he commits to purchasing this 10-acre parcel, also owned by the Coppolas, is get some sort of informal feeling from the planning board that you would sign a plan that we would survey and present to you. There'd be no division of land, but it would probably be an A&R plan for clean title purposes, maybe a few things, some bugs we'd have to work out, property boundary-wise, the fact that Bald Hill Road, you know, extends all the way down, you know, turning into a driveway at some point. Technically, you know, when you physically drive it, you don't necessarily know the difference where the driveway begins and the road ends, if it's dirt, gravel.
The whole road's dirt.
Right, exactly. But I think what's an important aspect of this is that the seller of the property is going to restrict this property by deed for no further subdivision. So, it'll be a 10-acre, plus or minus parcel of land, one owner, one dwelling. He'd like to have some agricultural, some animals, probably a little pasture. But I think things like this are advantageous for the board, you know, as opposed to someone coming along in two years, five years, six months that says, hey, I want to get a whole bunch, I want to get a whole bunch of lots there, you know, then it's.
And they can get the deed restriction off from the Coppolas, from the person that puts it on.
Right.
No, that would be in perpetuity.
You can't condition an A&R plan to have that.
He mentioned it.
It doesn't matter if he mentions it.
No, I know, but the land across the way, I'm just saying.
This is also restricted.
Same.
Initially, I looked at that, 15 acres, but it was too wet, who I want to do. The same contingencies could be with that property as well. Which, that house at the end was sold with all those contingencies as well, that they can't subdivide as well. So, let me just get this right.
Hold on, hold on. The lot at the end was considered a lot frontage exception lot by the board when it was endorsed, and that is why it's per bylaw that they can't subdivide that. What would be done here is you would have an A&R plan, and the board cannot limit the condition, put any conditions on an A&R plan.
Right.
You can't say you have to de-restrict the property.
That's why I brought it up, because you can't do that.
As a condition.
It's gonna be considered, no, there's no conditions.
No, that's what I'm saying, you can't condition, like Bill's saying, I agree with Bill, you cannot condition an A&R endorsement.
So, can you go back to the other plan?
Yeah.
So, I was under the understanding that all the remaining parcels there, all three parcels there, all three, that one, the one below, and the house.
Yeah, there's nothing remaining about this.
But they were all restricted underneath the same restriction, to be remaining as one parcel, I mean, that Bald Hill Road would not be.
Extended.
Yeah, be any further extended than the houses that were cut off previously, because the road has never been upgraded to what it was supposed to be. So, I was under the belief that all three parcels there were restricted for no additional owner, it was one common owner for all three parcels, and not to be restricted. So.
I don't have that.
Well, it's currently not owned by the same.
Hold on, just for clarity, is that a house down there, further down?
Yeah.
I didn't go all the way down.
Yeah.
So, could there not be, if this is going to be one parcel, one house, why can't, the existing ends there, and then it's a driveway and an easement to this other house through that property, and no road? No, I don't want to talk about roads, I don't want to talk about.
We need frontage.
You can create that, why can't, oh, it's an A&R, right, you can't, but it's an existing parcel, so why doesn't?
Where does Bald Hill Road end, you know, because it initially was.
Why you pointing?
In my opinion, Bald Hill Road ends here. But where was the original layout?
There's no layout, there's no layout, it's a way, I'm not a.
Yeah, so that's the problem with the road.
It's a way in existence.
I think that's the problem, is there was no layout for the road.
Yeah, there wouldn't have to be a layout.
So, it doesn't meet criteria of the way, you know, by whether IFC or fire code, for width, grade, quality, all that, it doesn't meet any of that.
You would have to, you'd have to make a determination as part of your A&R criteria, and if you didn't, if you didn't feel as though it did, what can be done to make it meet that criteria, similarly like you've done recently for Lake Shore Drive?
Well, that doesn't meet all the criteria there.
We signed an A&R plan.
Lake Shore is a beautiful road.
We don't create precedence, I don't know.
The IFC calls for 20 feet.
Just using as a similar.
Yeah, and the Lola Drive too, on court as well.
Not everybody talking at once.
Yeah, yeah, so, in looking into this, there are new regulations from the Board of Fire Prevention, and there is a whole new section and criteria for fire department access. I took this section and I ran it by the fire chief, and he agrees that those conditions should be held as a minimum standard by the board in improving.
Familiar with these, 20 feet?
Correct. And there's other conditions too, but that's just something that can give a basis, or I guess a minimum standard that we'd be looking for. I haven't gone out there, I don't know if this meets that standard or not, but I just want to let you know that the chief is requesting for fire access and safety. I know one of the requirements is a turnaround too, and so I know that's not out here.
We've been wanting that on a lot of this stuff lately, turnaround.
It's reasonable, it's very reasonable. You know, that doesn't exist now, turnaround, so.
No, there's an easement, when the first eight lots were carved out between U Street and the, what at the time we considered the end of Bald Hill Road.
Exactly.
There is a turnaround on that last lot on the left.
Is that a turn on the plan that we have?
No, no, this was a plan back from 2001.
To be off the page.
2011, there's another one?
Now, this plan, I want to point out, I want to point out a few things on the plan in your packet. You'll notice the number of revisions, which is unusual for an A&R plan. And the reason we have that number of revisions on this submittal was because the board and the applicant were going back and forth, they actually had to withdraw and refile a number of times because it would have been denied. You'll notice in those shaded areas, it says remaining land, and to me, and I'm sure Steve, that is indicative of land that was not surveyed necessarily. Remaining land is land that's there but not surveyed. So, this is the subject area we're talking about. Some of the concerns the board had, and certainly the person that did the original survey, Mike Yurka, I spoke with, and he had some concerns about the width that's shown on this plan, and the boundary lines associated with this on the north side for the road, what's being considered as the road. I showed him this plan, and those were some of the comments that he had given me at the time. So, I just want to caution the applicant, and I think I spoke with Dale too about this, you know, just be aware before you do invest your money that you're confident that this is, you're getting what you're paying for, and that this is a way that's suitable for the board to sign off on. Also, in your packet, I did put some questions that are in the A&R handbook for determining suitability of the way, so you have that as well.
I know I certainly have a number of questions that I want to, I can't do before I can make a determination or say which way I'd go on this, I don't really have a feel for it yet.
I mean, I think you should work off a concept plan, even if it's hand-sketched, and come back and tell us what you're proposing versus us looking at sort of blank.
Then, maybe us to take a look, you know, take a look at the road width.
Yeah, I've been down there.
I know the road. It turns into a cod bath.
Yeah.
And it's one, if you mean, you can't pass a cod bath.
I want that new criteria, 20 feet, and then a turnaround.
Certainly have to be some work done to the.
Yeah, homework to do, I'll do some research and determine the history of the way and its creation.
And like Lake Shore, the work would have to be done before the plan is filed.
Right, that's always the.
The, the work would have to be done in the field and in place before the board will endorse it.
Okay. The record plan that's on, the plan that's on record for Lake Shore doesn't make that very clear. It looks like the plan endorsed the plan.
No, he filed, he came in informally, the board kind of gave him some feedback, he constructed something, asked the board to go look, the board went out and looked, and then they felt comfortable after a period.
Okay, that's good to know. That A&R plan shows a typical roadway cross-section with some widening, which indicates like you, the board was signing it with those conditions, which was very odd.
Yeah.
Okay.
The work was done so that we could physically see it.
Yeah.
And know what was there before we acted on it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's really just a dialogue, I mean, he's, you know, wants to be careful with an investment.
Sure.
10 acres is comfortable.
I'd love to see a 10-acre parcel as opposed to.
Of course.
Five lots, so.
Yeah, same, same with the seller, same with the.
Certainly be willing to work with you, but we need some more answers first.
Getting ready to invest in it, so I kind of need a little direction.
Yeah.
So, marketing's still done, just kind of figuring out financially what's going to take to get there.
Okay, well, we'll do a little more homework, now that we've, you know, kind of know your position, and try submit some materials, and I'll let you know if we're ready to come back in two weeks.
Okay.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Good luck.
Nice chunk.
Anything else you want to thank me for, yeah?
No, the signings are pretty straightforward, so we're up to having.
All right.
Be a quickie.
All right, item one.
So, what do we start?
Do you have anything you want to present to us, or?
No.
Nothing, I mean, nothing, no.
You're looking at me, I'm not looking at those guys.
Position, still the same?
Well. Oh, God, really? Hey, I'm gonna be.
Don't tell me he's on an 8:30.
I'm off this way.
Are you looking at left?
I'm off this way.
Where are we going?
Going, uh, UK. We got three soccer matches in the city.
All right, Boyd, you ready? Before we get started, I'm gonna recognize the chairman of the selectmen.
Anything?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, good. Come forward on camera.
Oh, you'd like me to come, I'd happy to.
See if we can hit you on camera.
Is this better?
He just wanted to come in before we got started.
Yeah, I just understand you guys are going over the Walam Lake proposal again today, and I just wanted to throw a quick piece of my personal advice and the thoughts of my board, is that my understanding, once the last meeting, you got some pretty sound advice that was directed to you on how to act regarding from legal counsel. I would strongly urge that you take the advice of legal counsel.
I think it was clarification, I think.
Yeah, we're an autonomous board, I suppose, I understand what you're saying. We want this, you know, this to be a partnership.
Completely understand, and it's just, the biggest thing that I don't want to see is that it ends up going into a court, we end up losing revenue, and then we end up with a lawsuit that goes after. And I think that's all legal counsel is there to do, and they're under our direction to do that.
No, I understand, but if we don't do our due diligence as voted people by the people, then I think we could be up against a lawsuit by the people. So, I think either way, we have to make the right moves that balances everything out, and definitely hear what you're saying.
I think there was just, I think there was just some clarification on some of the things that JJ brought to the table, clarifying sometimes, I think, so, all the clarification.
It educated us.
Educating on just some of the other things that he's seen over his time. I think something that could, you know, help as well is, I think it was, I don't know, I'm not sure if all the board members heard it and stuff like that, but how the pilot works, if you can give us like a two-second.
So, the pilot program is basically came in from the taxes, to where I believe that there is an accelerator that runs under the kilowatt-hours that's tied to it. Bill could probably have a little bit of detail a little bit better on the pilot, but as opposed to getting genuine revenue or general revenue off of the property value itself, it's actually going to be significantly more profitable for the town to go into a pilot arrangement.
Right.
And the other portion to my understanding on it regarding the process is that, at this point in time in the procedure, the planning board can put conditions upon it, but you can't stop it. So, that's all. And you guys are, you're correct, an autonomous board?
And that's, we're prepared with a couple more small conditions that I think will create that partnership.
Beautiful.
That protects the environment, responds to the people, and makes a great project for the town.
Excellent.
So, I think that's where we're at at this point.
Well, we're hungry for revenue, so anywhere we can find it.
Thank you for coming in.
Have a good night.
All right, Boyd.
I'll make a motion to approve the ASD Walam Mass Solar LLC site plan review, Walam Lake Road with the following conditions. Landowner of disturbance shall be no closer than 110 feet to any house. Road location, re-center location of access road to center of entrance, shift road 30 feet, split the difference to allow 30-foot additional buffer. Remove both diversion berms from the plan, add one detention pond in lieu of basin in lieu of solar panels to the north of existing pond, and privacy fencing both sides until turnaround. All revisions to be shown on an administrative plan submitted by the applicant.
So, Evan, if you want to approach, can we show you graphically what we were thinking? And I think it should be acceptable, I hope, because we want to move this forward as well as you do.
I've got to be honest, I don't think I can comment on new information.
No.
It's not new information.
So, there's a motion, and it needs to either be seconded or not.
Hasn't been seconded yet.
And then there's discussion.
I'll second it because, you know, it's part of the genesis of this. So, can I, from a graphic standpoint.
Hold on here, no, we just did, did we just do a second here, or what's going on here?
Aaron.
What, you know, right now, what's in front of us, and how it's laid out as far as you've seconded it, so that means there's a vote.
Mm-hmm. You can have a discussion now.
Not a vote to.
Yeah, that's what, no.
There's a vote on the table, yes.
Yeah, all right. So, I don't, I don't know.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? A motion's been made, seconded, is there any discussion?
Right, is there any discussion? I mean, the motion was made to approve it with the new conditions. I think the conditions are coming from Tracy.
And myself.
And Aaron.
Which could move it forward, we're just trying to present it to the board.
Yeah, I don't think, no, I don't.
You can modify the.
But I don't think you can make, I don't think you should be making a motion to approve the project with these conditions, since the rest of the board members haven't had a chance to.
That's why we're doing discussion, though.
Right.
I can make any motion I want with conditions, as town council has stated. And if we want, if I want to rescind my, one of my conditions after discussion, I can do that.
Yeah, that, have you seen this?
I'd just like to ask is, who's the engineer that designed this, and who stamped it?
It's a matter of.
Who's the engineer that designed it and stamped it?
Hold on, let's act on the motion first.
None of us are engineers, so we have to take it from, I mean, I'm sorry, but none of us elected on this board are engineers. We have architects, and we have builders, and we have whatever. And we have common sense people, right, that's why we're here, so.
I can't go with something with the whole design change without it being.
It's not, can we review it? Are you open to hearing anything?
I'm open to hear it, I'm open to hearing it. I just, I'm worried about the form of the motion, a motion to approve the project with these following conditions. I think the conditions should be discussed as a board before the motion is made.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, what would happen is, the motion's been made, and it's been seconded, the board can discuss it amongst themselves, and then take a vote. So, either the motion will pass, or it won't pass. Let's assume it fails, a subsequent motion can be made.
To approve the project.
And then.
All right, that's what, that's what I wanted to be clear on.
That's what is, that's what we do all the time.
Discussion.
Yeah, I was just worried about the form of the motion.
And the thing is, we're working for the town, we're not working for the applicant, and we're not working for anybody in particular, we work for the town. We're here to represent as best we can, that's all we're doing. So, can I explain?
Explain.
Okay, so, there is a few neighbors that it's sort of egregious where they are, because they're on these tiny lots, and they were extremely tight to the little roadway coming in, and so, all we did was play a little bit of Solomon here, when we felt that we could mediate the distance between it, it's the same driveway, same everything that they want to do, we didn't lose any panels up here whatsoever, but it went to 80 instead of 50 feet here, and then went from 50 feet to 20 feet here because of the distance of the houses, and the buffer that's prescribed by just woods and things. So, that's a very simple, nothing changed. I mean, it's just moving it. There's no cost difference to the project or anything, in this case.
Do you want to look at it?
Yeah.
Come on over to you.
Look at it. So, basically, we're just sliding over.
Just taking from one property.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, we're just sliding it down, all right, so that's that thing. We'd like to take these out. I don't think that they're going to do anything other than create erosion at the end here, that's going to be worse, and a little river running down through here, and not have these. But what we felt was that this, which was certainly brought to light through this process, is that the size and the magnitude of this project, and the fact that it's not, and it's not a mountain, don't get me wrong. I've been there, I know the elevation's 130 feet from here to here, probably 100 feet within here in elevation, but it's over a long area, so it's like 1500 feet long or something, 1200 feet long, something like that, that we would create this as a second detention basin here, and that's it. These are removed, this slides over, but this is your, what here is representing a half an acre of panels, and that's it. And what's half an acre, 25 acres?
I can't comment on.
Two percent, is that 2%?
I don't know.
What's, no, you don't want to try?
And as far as the PE thing, Bill can be our reviewer of the small changes that have been made. He already has all of the information.
This is to protect the lake down here, to protect the environment and the wetlands, that's all it's for. It's for the betterment of the town, and I think it's a good play, so.
Is this, is this being proposed, okay, because you've got three culverts down here, and that you're trying to catch, basically have a retention pond on both legs, basically the, what would you call it, the west side?
Right, it's the entire downslope side, basically protecting everything else, and then it filters it and conditions the water, and, you know, it's a good thing for the ecology, it isn't a bad thing. It may not be required under whatever stormwater management, but I think it's something that, you know, we've had discussions about and.
I don't, I don't think this is a problem, because this is still working within their zone area anyway, since it's shifting. I don't think that's a problem.
These can come out, but we don't care about those.
We don't care, we wanted those in there.
Would, they accelerate the water, though, into those particular areas at the end.
They do?
Basically, these two things, I'm with you, I think it just catches the water, it's going to go somewhere.
It's going to go to the.
It's going to fall.
It's gonna fall out, and it's gonna come out. And then you only got one detention pond to catch it.
Right.
Uh, this other detention pond would do a lot more good, I think, than the two.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this just.
So, so this, this is gonna divert it, is what you're saying? Is you thinking this will divert it? It'll let this and then divert it to this?
But it will accelerate it and also create erosion, I think, under these panels and all the, you know, it's gonna, it's, it's putting all the water in one area, which is not a good thing to do.
So, just, just with any other applicant, with a berm, right? These are berms.
Yeah.
Right? I don't see a berm, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, accelerating if it's hitting the berm. You thinking when it's coming off, it's gonna accelerate?
Those are two different things.
It, it, it wouldn't necessarily accelerate, but it, it's doing what it was designed to do, diverting, okay? So, it's taking flow from here.
Yeah.
And we went over this during the meeting. This is nothing new. Um, you know, the flow's coming downhill here at like a 5% grade, it's getting caught by both of these, and then sending it to the south pond over here.
Yeah, I think that's what these really were attempting to. Were intended to do.
And, and during the meeting, I did vote, was concerned about erosion at these two ponds.
Erosion at the pond, so you're thinking if these aren't in, you'd avoid the erosion.
You avoid the erosion and.
Evenly.
And you would have two ponds to.
Two ponds to catch?
To compensate.
Okay. So, that's it? Do you think, so does that make sense based upon your, you know, previous reviews, that if, if these aren't in, you've got two ponds here, now you're catching, you're catching it across? And I, I, I see, I see the point of, you know, you've, you've got a, a flat tow, basically, instead of shifting it to one side and catching it, you know, directing it to one lower area, but you're now basically catching it even across a bigger retention pond area or something.
Can it be designed, is your question? Yes.
Yeah.
I think.
This represents 2% of the panels.
No, I'm on credit.
25 acres, half an acre is 1/50th. And, um, you know, so I, you know, I'm, I know that I'm in favor to vote for this tonight in a positive way. If we can somehow make this happen, I think it's a better project. I mean, I'm not an engineer, I just happen to be a lowly architect, but, I don't know. So, um, I mean, that's, that's why, we've been thinking about this, thinking about it a lot, you know?
Why wasn't it brought up earlier?
Because we're thinking about it a lot.
Because there's nobody else meeting.
Yeah.
I can understand where they're coming from.
Yeah.
I don't.
Condition they wanna impose on.
2%.
In which we have a, which we have a right to.
Yeah, I know, but.
So, as the applicant, I am only allowed to provide you responsibly information you have previously received. I can't provide, you're not supposed to consider new information, but that doesn't mean I can't regurgitate things that were said, spoken during, and provided during the open public meeting, hearing. The reason we didn't have the north basin was because we didn't think it was necessary the way the project evolved, that we already had check dams and those berms in place when we set back further for the larger wetlands. I think during that, if we had removed all of those berms and check dams, I believe my engineers said that a pond would be reasonable in the evolution of the project. So, if what the board is considering is effectively a previous iteration, where on the engineering side of what we previously proposed, there were two ponds, and then we worked, then we got more conservative with the check dams.
Yeah.
And the berms, and then we didn't need the pond. If the board is looking to consider what is effectively a previous design, you have, I can't tell you anything more than that, but if you vote on it.
It's not new information.
Um, that's your discretion. I think it's not corporate civil work that we've gone over before, but that's about the extent of what I can say, that that does reflect a previous design. I think the condition would need to be specific to allow us to walk back a little bit in the berms and the check dams, because it does have to pass stormwater requirements, which means I can't starve anything.
Correct.
So, that's the, that's the balance that has to strike.
This, you can decide whether or not you have to put them based on stormwater management or not, I'm just saying that we felt that with this broadening of this, that it might not be needed.
And that's, you've got, I mean, that's as much as I'm comfortable saying at the moment, so.
Appreciate that.
Proceed forward as, I guess.
All it has to do is be approved, final approval by Bill. He says it checks out to all the requirements.
Yeah, it's all of the condition.
By doing this and changing this, will he have to go back through COMCON?
No.
No, that's.
No, they're outside.
No, it was, was, whatever conditions we're setting right now would not involve COMCON, because they're still within the buffer zone.
No, with outside.
Outside the buffer zone, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, if every, you know, if you're at least able to move the question or move the vote, I'm ready to vote, and, um, you know, we've heard from everybody, and we're not taking any new information, it's all the stuff we've thought about before, and I'd like to move this vote according to the conditions that Tracy's written and also read, and this plan in schematic form, as amendment, amended here, to vote in favor of this project moving forward. I don't know the wording, but that's what I feel.
Anybody else have anything?
I think we've taken the public's comments into consideration in this decision for little modifications, and not destroying the project, and getting into an appeals.
Right. And it's 98% of the project, 98% of these panels are still here. You know, less 2%, I think, so. We can move forward then.
By the time they get going, they'll be more efficient anyway.
Oh, right.
We've already accounted for that.
2% more.
We, you aim for the ball's gonna land, not where it starts, so.
Right, exactly.
All right. Phil, any comments?
No, it's the board's call.
And you feel that this procedure is within the confines of setting conditions and not changing?
Well, I would say ultimately, the board should sign off on the final plan, you know, with my recommendation that it meets stormwater design standards.
And Tom, I quoted, "The board may impose reasonable conditions at the expense of the applicant, including performance guarantees to promote these objectives, i.e. screening to minimize clear cutting."
All right. Anybody else have something to add?
The pleasure of the board.
Okay. All right, motion has been made, in second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You're abstaining, one abstention from less. Okay, that's unanimous vote.
You carry it, Sam.
All right. So, project is approved.
Let's do a great project.
Heading the applicant's acceptance of the condition.
That's for you.
Thank you.
Depends on what you wanna say.
Guys, this is, yeah, thanks.
I have a voice share, I might need to interrupt.
Um, I would ask, since you, I'll work with Bill and I'll have our engineer, I need to come out to the same stormwater solutions.
Sure.
Move as much of that stuff working up the hill as we need to responsibly. These are my neighbors to the south where you moved the road a little closer to.
Sorry about that, guys.
You know something, it is a bit okay to say, to comment?
Oh, please, yeah.
I've talked with them, you know, both during the meetings and after meetings and everything like that, and I've been extremely impressed with the willingness to, to work with us. You know, and the doors can be right next to us, it's gonna be all behind us, the whole solar farm and everything. Um, he hasn't been a jerk, you know, he hasn't represented one of the big jerks or anything like that. Um, you know, the board's been awesome, too. You know, you guys working on, you know, make sure that there's some sort of nice fence or something like that put up, the landscaping and everything. He wasn't joking when he, when he said that, you know, based on the landscape design, I might have to cut back, you know, all the, the rest of my land just so I can enjoy the landscape. It looks really, really great.
Did he get his face on a billboard or just?
Yeah.
I've been very impressed with the stuff that he's done, I've been incredibly impressed with everything that you people have done, the professionalism, not jumping to conclusions, not, you're just doing your job, and from my, my perspective, doing it very, very well. I know you guys are under a lot of pressure from a lot of different, you know, perspectives from people, but everybody's done a, a great job, I'm extremely impressed, and the driveway moving closer to me, it's gonna be a little bit of an inconvenience for, during the construction, after that.
It's a great parking spot for when you have a party.
He's gonna make sure that he can get it back. But no, once the construction's done, you know, I'm never gonna see it anyhow.
From the other neighbors, it's a bit of a Solomon play, you know, we're very close.
Absolutely, and I felt very, very bad for these, the neighbors on Burchell Road.
At the beginning.
They don't have any property.
Right.
You know, and it's so.
There's a mother buffer.
They practically do now.
Yeah, I just, I'm.
I appreciate everything that everybody's done. Thanks for your input and coming, and everybody in the town, you know, it is what it is, and people are motivated by, everybody's motivated by different things at different times, and we need to respond, and we're elected by the people, and that's what we have to respond to, so. And the opposite.
We, we try. Can I just ask one question, though?
Do you wanna join the board?
Yeah, we need some.
Some of the people on We Are Dynamic Douglas on Facebook. I know, they're going there.
Never been there.
I don't know where I am, yeah.
Never been there, never will.
Um, you know, I've, I've actually contributed quite a bit to a few threads discussing this whole project, and one thing that, that's, you know, a couple people brought up, and I got thinking about it, and I decided that I, I do need to ask the board here. So now, we've got these plans, and everything is, like, is, you know, looks awesome. On paper, there should be no increase, you know, flooding or anything like that down on Shore Road. What happens if, for whatever reason, that the person who installs, actually puts this stuff in, doesn't do it exactly to plan, and whatever happens, and all of a sudden, there is a fairly significant increase in water going down there, now people are getting flooded up? Is there any kind of contingency to ever, because the, the question was, if, if it happens, who's responsible?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna. No retention pond right now, so what he's putting in there would be a retention pond.
Another detention pond.
To, to hold up the water, so.
But the question is, and I don't know the answer, is there, is there surety here?
Well, build that for some odd reason. But there's guarantees in place that everything is going to be working as it's calculated. So, if it doesn't work, then there's, I'm sure there's something to fall back on.
But it's no different though.
But I don't think that's gonna happen.
Like, if another great hurricane ever comes up the coast, I mean, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Whether or not, you're gonna get flooded out, I don't care what's there. But it's all planned on, I think, a hundred year or five year storm.
So, the practical version is, I'm sure everyone who has an issue will be out there with a fine-tooth comb and a laser level looking at the top of those berms, as designed. And if they're not designed right, I'm not gonna get an occupancy permit.
Correct.
And if I'm not gonna get an occupancy permit, I'm not gonna sell any power. So, Evan will be out there with a wheelbarrow and some dirt, raising the size of the retention ponds, that's what I think. That's, that's the pre and post-construction standard.
I just, I, I had to ask for the people that have been posing some of these questions, it made me think, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much, really.
Nice to have somebody say that to you.
I'll be out here, I'll be, have Douglas in touch with you, send you an email tomorrow and start.
Again.
All right. Thanks so much.
So, I'll draft up some conditions, and I'll run it by you, and.
And if I get an email tonight that notify you.
Tomorrow.
Okay, tonight? Tonight, we're ready to go. That note just gives us a record of the board's vote, because otherwise, site plan review is weird. You guys could just vote.
Yes.
Make no recording, and it would still be binding, I just need something that says in total ways.
It's all being recorded right now.
Yeah, but there's no standard for site plan review town to town, it's ridiculous.
Correct.
So, super. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say we have no standards?
Thanks, you guys.
No, no, there aren't.
You guys have great standards.
Phil, what am I signing here?
A new, he made a, a new carpet.
Oh, no. Thanks, yeah, we have a full 14 concerts there this year. And the farmers working.
Thank you. Yeah, tonight. Yeah. I wanna say, I wanna send a shot.
We're really building that much character.
I know. I know. I know. Good job, Aaron, and good job, Tracy.
I wasn't gonna take it, I was trying to put a job.
Thank you, Mike. Wasn't sure, I always balk on stuff.
You told Kevin to come in here.
No, I did not tell Kevin to come in here.
You had it later.
I asked if he could come in and speak to the board before we.
There had to be a happy.
Very disrespectful.
He's happy.
All the stuff that they let go by.
That's all that matters, everybody's happy.
As we say, as we say, the chairman of the board of selection asked him if he could come in and speak to us before we.
You know, right from the beginning, my big concern was water.
Yes.
I know they have a nice little beach down there.
I don't know, that was wrong or not, I don't think it was wrong.
Never proud of.
Phil, we're not signing anything on the second page, right?
I hate to see water on the down quarter.
No.
Not a republic.
That's the notice, yeah.
But, you know, it seems like they got a good plan to take care of it.
No red pens. Signing two more things.
I think those people are going to be happy with those, that solar farm. You know why? Because.
I'm very pro-solar, I don't have a problem.
If they don't get, if they didn't get the solar farm, what's next?
It's always really ruined and disrespectful to us.
Look pretty, look pretty.
Someone threatening us that we didn't want to go.
It's great, thank you.
Can I take one minute?
I didn't take it that way.
Up to the chair? Chair, maybe, sixty-second break?
Sixty seconds?
Or a hundred and twenty seconds or something.
Go, I'm timing you. No, take your time, Aaron, go ahead, we got nothing pressing right now.
All we have to do is sign those two things, right? Sign donation agreement.
So reconvening?
Yep.
At seven fifty-four?
Reconvening at seven fifty-four, thank you, Bill.
All right, so we did the vote, we did the vote there.
Sign donation agreement, extension Kingwood Estate subdivision project.
We've signed this in the past, this is basically remaining surety money for both of these projects. It allows us to use the bond money from the failed projects, the remaining bond money for roadway maintenance.
Yeah.
Do we need it?
Highway would use it, selectmen already signed the forms for Sunset Drive and for Royal Crest Drive.
Okay.
Oh, Royal Crest is the Kingwood Estates?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was trying to figure out where that was.
How about potholes?
And that's in our back.
This is the most brutal season in the bill.
That's in there.
You know, the roads are all apart.
Next one is, signed donation agreement, extension, Bombard.
Yep, same thing.
About to sign.
Yep.
All right, Bald Hill Road, we already discussed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Minutes, that's.
Minutes. Where's Mike?
Our meeting minutes person isn't here.
We're caught up, so why don't we do what we tell next week?
Yeah, we'll wait till next meeting and let Mike do it. He likes doing those.
Ernie, do we need to knock off some of these future agenda items? Because, like, I think we talked about the drone regs.
That we can regulate them.
I don't know where that stands, Aaron's the.
Let it, let it go, take it off.
Okay.
For now, until I have something to do.
Thank you, Les.
Okay.
All right, we'll take that one off, all right.
Marijuana retail?
I think we should keep that on, if we want money, you know, if the town is struggling for money.
Don't the selectmen govern that? No, not.
Well, it's the buy.
I think for location, the license they have, but for us it's.
Well, they view it as a by right use in retail districts.
It's just like a liquor license.
Yeah, they just get a license.
Okay.
They're treating it, they're treating it the same as they do the liquor license.
So we can get rid of that?
Yeah. All right. Private ways?
Private ways, yeah, that, well, if you want to take a look at the general bylaw, that's where that would go.
Yeah, we're not taking private ways off because we might be amending the existing.
Yeah, and frankly, I think, you know, with the chief's input, the fire code, these residential compounds, you know, are narrower than what, what.
Right, we have some discussion to do on that because we've.
And they don't have a turnaround.
Right.
Like.
And I don't have a problem with that.
Like the fire code requires.
Residential compounds, I don't have a problem with that, you know, it's not a big project.
It's when you have.
You get a fire truck up there anyway, so you have to back around, that's, I don't have a problem. I think sometimes the regulations get too strict.
Yeah.
So we'll keep that off. Some discussion to do on private ways, so that's going to stay on the agenda.
All right, fair enough, I think the rest, the solar regs, we're.
Yeah, they stay.
Yeah, I got, I mean, we should still have solar regs.
Yeah, no, no, I agree.
We're getting more versed.
No, I agree. Just so we can have some consistency in our little communities.
Yeah, so we're keeping solar.
Yep.
We're keeping subdivision regulations.
That's going to be coming up, isn't it?
Yeah, why? Subdivision regs, right?
Well, they said, they said spring, I don't know what the CMR PC is doing for that region.
I talked to them yesterday about it and they're filing, they've got two other communities that are interested, so they're filing a grant application for district local technical assistance funds with the state, they're going to use that to work with each of the towns. They will, once they get the grant, they will develop a scope for us and then we'll review it at that point.
Today needs to stay on.
All right, yeah, that's good, we can give the rest up.
So, all right, so that's, Lakeside Residential, that's staying on?
Yeah, that's.
Eventually. Private Ways is staying on, the show, is public hearing zoning, where is mine? So the public hearings have been advertised, are they going to be?
They're all advertised, there's three of them that we're going to have.
We're going to put them on your agendas, on the same agenda?
We're notifying the abutters, the owners and direct abutters for the district changes.
Directly, we don't have to go three hundred feet?
There's no, no.
We don't have to notify them at all.
Okay, okay.